So our Mayor Harry Buck is out of town tonight, so I will be chairing the meeting as the President of the Council. So if we could have the roll call, please, Christina.
Johnson.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Lawrence.
Here.
Steen.
Here.
Mayor Buck.
Bart Fish.
Here. Okay, approval of the agenda, someone?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we have three sets of minutes for May 11th, and May 15th, and May 22nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, approval of the claims, does anybody have any questions on the claims?
Would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got motion and a second to approve the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, so can we do the, we just do all those at once? Okay. One motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve their wage adjustments for six of our staff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now is the time for public comments, so what I'd like to do is, if you're here for an item that's on the agenda, let's hold off on that and then come up and talk when that item comes up on the agenda. If you have something else that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward with that. We can't take any action on it, but we are certainly happy to listen. So, does anybody have any public comments? Oh.
Hi, Lisa Marso, 1325 Parkview Place in Brandon, South Dakota. I am the Chair of the Brandon 50th Anniversary Party Event Celebration. I have given the Council members, and on the back there also are flyers for the events that we're going to have for the three-day celebration. Ninety-some percent of the events are free, there's going to be a free picnic, there's free swim in the evening, Gaga Ball, Pickleball, we're just doing a whole bunch of stuff, I'm super excited, the volunteers have been hard at work, and I just wanted to make sure that the Council and the public is aware that we're going to be having this event. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Thanks for cheering that. Anybody else with public comments, other than what's on the agenda? Okay. All right. So we have to do all of these separately, right, Brian?
Right.
Okay. So first, we have a public hearing for Double D Saloon Request for a One-Day Liquor License, and that's in conjunction with the celebration, I believe. Okay?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the liquor license for one day for Double D, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First reading of Ordinance 683, amendments and change of zone and procedure, and Mr. Patrick is here.
All right, so, our first of quite a few on here. So, a lot of these are kind of closing loopholes, making things easier. We are always looking at the zoning ordinance to make sure it functions properly and efficiently, and does the things we'd want them to do. This first one, Ordinance 683, amends the procedure for changes of zones, re-zones. A few months back, we added a procedural element for variances in conditional use permits that if a property is within 300 feet of that proposed conditional use permit or variance, that we would send them a letter in the mail prior to the public hearing, the same 10-day period as it would be in the newspaper. So it's just an added step of providing more notice. This extends that 300-foot notice to in-city properties subject to a rezone. So that's what this language does.
And I would just add, it's not required by law, but you certainly can adopt it, so the fact that we haven't done it before doesn't mean that we did something incorrectly.
Okay, that was my question. Okay. All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve first reading of Ordinance Number 683, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're just keeping you up there, Patrick, is that okay?
Yep. Yep. 684, so, conditional use permits traditionally attach to the land they go with, and after a certain period of time, if it is not used for that period, it would expire, or used to, yeah, so that kind of thing. This is, we thought about it, we took another look at it, and we sense home occupations are conditional uses, should that same rule be applied to home occupations, which are generally very specific to the person carrying out that home occupation? If that person left that property, should the conditional use permit still be on the property, or should it terminate once the person doing that occupation leaves? So this would terminate it if they leave, and it's still, it would still apply if they terminated the use as well.
So if I was a hairdresser, and I moved, the home occupation would go away?
Correct. The person that moves in after you, if they wanted to do the same thing, they'd have to come back to a new permit, they couldn't just assume your business.
Okay.
So in the event of a, like a joint business, where you're out there, and the couple gets divorced, separated, or whatever, would the person that stays there have to reapply under their own name, or could they just continue as-is?
That would probably depend on who it is issued to. If it would probably, in the event that it was the husband and wife, it was issued to both of them, it would probably say the husband is the one that stays. It would probably still be in effect for the husband, but not the wife.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 684, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I should say that Patrick has worked really hard on all of these changes, and planning and zoning has studied them extensively too, so it's not like we're just doing this off the cuff, we've, they've been studied. Okay, now we're on to 685, Patrick.
Okay. 685 clarifies some definitions and regulations regarding retail sale of gasoline. If you look, one example, in the Central Business District, if you go to gasoline dispensing station, it cites you to the definition, which is all pumps and islands need to be 12 feet, but then you go down to motor vehicle service station, it says gasoline pumps and islands need to be 15 feet away. So, if it's a gasoline-related business, doing roughly the same thing, why should it have different standards? This kind of clarifies it all. P&amp;Z decided instead of 12 or 15, they just went with the 15 higher number, and this applies where those definitions are. We sync the definitions up, so, to hopefully eliminate that problem that didn't necessarily make sense. If you were one thing versus the other, you would, yeah, so, just trying to keep things consistent.
Clean things up a bit. Okay. Do we have, to your knowledge, do we have any that would fall within that 12-foot right now that could be impacted by this?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to go out and measure it out. I, I don't think so. I think Casey's might be the one that comes to mind, but I think they are far enough away. So, we'd have to measure it out.
Maybe grandfather.
Assuming nothing catastrophic happens to them, they'd be non-conforming.
Okay, any other questions? Entertain a motion?
Would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on first reading of Ordinance 685, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 686.
So 686 and 687 are, they're related, but they're different ordinances because different subjects require an independent ordinance. So, this all stems from the conversations we've been having with some local associations regarding the use of Aspen Park. We've been talking to the Hockey Association regarding them having a hockey facility there, and we've been talking to the Brandon Wellness folks about, they want to do a wellness center in Aspen Park. In order to be a use in a district, you have to be a defined use and placed into the permitted or conditional uses. Currently, what they were proposing did not fall under a use in Aspen Park, which is an institutional district, so we created a definition, we put it at, we put them as conditional uses just because we do have institutionally-zoned land that is not owned by the city, churches, schools, other institutional-type things are also in the institutional district, so this would still give the city some oversight on the operations of those, what it looks like, where it is, how it's positioned, that kind of thing.
Okay. So the first one really would tie to hockey, or a facility like that?
Correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Again, P&amp;Z's been working on these for several months.
And I have talked to both, well, the Wellness Association and the Hockey Association, and they seemed fine with the definitions.
Would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve 686 on the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And 687 is the definition to allow all that to happen for Brandon Wellness. Public rec facility is, can read it to you if you need the definition, but this is the one that would allow Brandon Wellness to start working on a facility, and should they get the funding and everything else they need to do, this is just opening the door from a city perspective to start having the conversations and get the ball rolling.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve 687, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Patrick, when we make changes to our zoning code, it has to go through this format with the ordinance?
Correct.
Okay. As I, I think sometimes we just think, we can just throw something out there, and we really can't. I mean, we've got to have public hearings, and publish notices, and all kinds of, yeah, we have lots of rules, okay. Okay, we have 688, what's that one?
So 688 is a, the developer of Encore Park came to us because they have some, some lots out there that they would like a little flexibility on. This is light industrial, it's, they have a couple of lots that are on a railroad track, or adjacent to a railroad, and the railroad provides its own setback, you have to be a certain separation distance from the railroad track. So that, of course, eats up a fair amount of land, so their proposal to us, if you all would be open to it, is that you be able to, since that would be a side yard in their example, and side yards generally have the smallest setback, so, if you'd be willing to deduct some off the rear yard and then move that to the side yard, so they would have more buildable space on the lot, you would swap the rear yard setback to some degree with the side yard to allow them to shift their building and use more of the lot.
They'd be able to build deeper into that lot.
Correct. And this would apply only for an institutional lot next to, a light industrial next to either another light industrial or heavy industrial. This would not impact if that yard was next to a commercial lot, or a residential lot, or an institutional lot, or anything else. It's a very limited application, and hopefully this will be used if approved by you all, by, hopefully it's something that developers can use, not just in Encore Park, but in other places in the city that are LI. HI already has the setbacks, so the swap wouldn't be necessary, it's just, that's why LI is by itself in this ordinance.
Anybody have any questions on that one?
Would move to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Number 688, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Patrick, so then these will come around again for a second reading, all of these?
Correct.
Will that be at the next meeting, or is there a publishing timeframe?
It should be the next meeting.
Should be the next meeting.
The next one doesn't have to be a Notice Public Hearing, so it'll just go on your agenda.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you for all your work, appreciate it. Okay, so now we're going to deal with old business, we've got the second reading of Ordinance 682, rezoning Track 1 in Stone Ridge Estates. So how I'd like to handle this is, I know Brian is here from Stone Ridge, and I am anticipating that some of you folks would like to visit, we are going to keep it to five minutes, that's our, that's what we do for all of our public comments, so what we'd like you to do is come forward, push the little button on the microphone, give us your name and address, and then give us your information, what you'd like to discuss. So, who would like to go first?
I think probably Brian should go first.
Okay.
Good evening, Brian Jackson, Land Development Manager with Van Busker Companies. Apologies I couldn't be here for the last meeting, I was at my son's college graduation. I know I don't look old enough, but I do. With that, and that Steve filled in on the via the phone. I'm just going to hit a couple facts tonight that go down with this, and I've been sending you all some information, just kind of to let you know what this is. Nine months, we've been working on this, my initial, I initially came to the city staff in planning and zoning, and was asking for a variance of R1 so that we could do the smaller side yard setbacks. Since it wasn't necessarily a hardship, we were told no, but as a workaround to go back and visit with the city staff and have a, either come up with a new zoning area, which would be like an R1A, or, you know, I'm not sure exactly how we'd call it, or amend a current zoning ordinance, which is at the direction of the city staff was the way that they said to go. So let's go ahead and amend one that's currently in place, and go that route. So that's where, how we got to this point is because I couldn't do the R1A variance for the single-family housing with the smaller side yard setbacks to hear tonight. So, worked with the city staff in drafting that, Patrick actually is the one that drafted the ordinance change and when I brought it through. I did have a meeting directly with Tammy, and Patrick, and Paul, just to visit with them and have their, what their thoughts are, and then when we worked with Patrick and he was able to rewrite the ordinance, we brought it through the Developer Committee, brought it to them to see, also through the planning and zoning, then ultimately through your board. Concurrently, we were running our preliminary engineering plan through at the same time just for time, because that was basically, the concept was, is that we're going to do single-family, we didn't think of anything else, and that's why we're running concurrently with it. So, that's where we're at. I sent you guys a video today, I don't know if you got a chance to watch it, it's sideways over there, and we can sure play it if you want, but essentially, I just wanted to show you, and if you want to hear me breathing hard walking up a hill with that, but, we, it's basically, I went out to the site and walked what the lots are graded at with the cul-de-sac, because I think that's really where we're at now with, where we're, with this, is, the cul-de-sacs are already graded and they're walkout lots, so if you had an opportunity to look at that, you can see that there's probably anywhere from eight to 10 feet of fall on those, so if there's going to be any type of, or generally, I should say, if you're thinking, I mean, we're going to build a townhome, you think like Empire Homes, Signature Homes, they're slab-on grade and they go up. These lots are designed for single-family homes. The preliminary engineering plan, and in the next day or so, we'll get the development engineering plan over to Tammy for review, we'll have utilities in there that will be for single-family, which means there's one water line and one sewer line to each lot. If there's going to be anything additional to that, you're going to have multiple lines, no reason to install those, put asphalt down, and then have somebody to go dig it all up, because in today's environment, and what the costs of materials and the short supply of labor, it doesn't make financial sense to do anything like that. Once we get Tammy's approval, as far as the engineering plans go, our plan is to have construction start and get the utilities and the infrastructure put in with that, and then that, once we get our final bids in from our contractors, that's when we'll set the price and start marketing. Well, the lots are already being marketed as to be determined as a price for single-family housing with that. The other last thing I can do is, and I brought copies if you guys wanted to see this, is tomorrow, and I'm sorry I didn't think about this earlier, but we'll go ahead and file the restricted covenants on Track 1, which basically, there's a section in there that says that the lots are for single-family use only. Same covenants have would be filed, that are filed in Stone Ridge, it's just we changed the legal description, and then we changed the side yard setbacks to match the five feet on that, and that's specifically for the Track 1, as you see on the board, which is what we're here for now. As we go through with the remainder of the neighborhood, because that will stay in the R1 zoning, we'll go back to the seven-foot side yards with that, so, questions?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions for Brian, and then we'll bring up the other folks that wanted to discuss this?
So Brian, the, the infrastructure piece of it, that all has to be approved, submitted and approved by Tammy, is that correct?
Correct.
And has that been submitted at this point, like for the?
I, I sent her a draft version, quote-unquote, what I, what I found out today from our engineer, my swan, is when we did some of our re-grading further down, like where towpath circle's going to be, is that the, we weren't getting as much settling out of the soil that we had, so they actually raised up one of the intersections, so now they're adjusting some manhole heights, and so probably by Wednesday, we'll have the formal submission to Tammy with that, that, yeah, because she'll approve the locations, and, whatever she approves, as part of her process, there's a formal, I leave that to the engineers, I kind of get to do the public meetings and the sales part of it all, but right, yeah, so, anything that was on the preliminary plan, it's going to carry over to that with any minor adjustments that she would find that, to meet the, make sure it's meeting the city standards.
Can you talk about the covenants one more time?
Yeah, you bet. So basically, most of the folks are here, if they live in our Stone Ridge neighborhood, and I have some other people, we, we file a declaration of restrictive covenants on our lots, on all of our neighborhoods, and most developers all do this, and it kind of basically sets the rules for that. So generally, they're usually set for minimum square footage guidelines, roof pitch, brick-stone requirements, you know, some go as far as saying what colors you can do with your house, what you can and can't do with the yards. Ours will say, like, you can't have a chain-link fence unless it's galvanized, or you can't have a galvanized fence unless it's like vinyl dipped, you know, things along that line, because what we're in the process, you know, what we do is, and that's why the folks are here, is that we're providing a product where they can have a neighborhood, where they can have, like, homes, that type of style, where they're similarly sized, similar values, within a range, that type of thing, and that's where the covenants come in, and are enforceable that way. So, the people who buy lots from us are, they submit their house plans to us for review, and that's, those are generally the things that we go through and look for, is, does it meet the minimum size requirements, you know, obviously in this case, is it single-family? Because just like all of our other neighborhoods, our lots are single-family, three-car garage, or, you know, that type of thing, is what we go through and look. Generally, we don't file those until we actually plat the individual lots, but in this case, just to help move things forward, is that we'll plat it with the Register of Deeds, excuse me, we record them with the Register of Deeds on Track 1 as it's shown now, and then it still carries it forward as we plat the lots into the individual lots that you've seen on the preliminary plan.
Brian, for those covenants, is that just when they're buying it and building it? How, how long do those covenants carry over?
I'm going to look at Lisa, about 25 years. They're almost perpetual anymore, but it's, it's by whatever state statute allows.
So again, just, I guess to reiterate, probably some of the people that are in the stands, so they're, they're in the crowd here, these covenants will, will state that those, I guess, for my, the biggest two concerns is Lot 28 and 29, obviously the pre-existing homes there, they're going to be backing up to R2, and the covenants is going to say that you can only do?
Single-family, right. Yep, and I showed, and I got copies, I can just let everybody look at if they want to take a chance review, or, or whatever, but right, and I just showed Patrick the specific language, and it's under Section 4.01, which basically, it says, "No lot shall be used except for single-family owner occupied residential purposes exclusively," and that a lot and home may be rented on a temporary basis, and that's going to go away too with all the Airbnb rules that are coming out anymore, but, for the most part, yeah, it's, you know, we don't allow people to buy lots and put their campers or anything on there while they're building a house. It's, and we also have a rule that goes in there, it's basically, once you start up building a house, finish building a house, we, and that goes back to the Weekend Warriors that used to do it, you know, when you have, like, some of the builders that are here in the audience, when you're hiring a contractor to do it, obviously they're incentivized to get your house done as quickly as possible, to get you into the house, and so that they can get paid in that aspect also, but, and, and, you know, if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to the covenants, but yeah, we've, we've worked with them, forever with them.
Other questions for Brian, from up here? Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Who else would like to speak?
I have one point of clarification on the amendment process that we went through. So, the zoning ordinance isn't, is never written in stone, we add to it, we change it, we modify things. Things change with time, and we respond to, hopefully, more good changes than bad changes. So, generally, planning and zoning is pretty good at recognizing when a change needs to happen, they understand the trends in the community. Sometimes the developers come to us, see a change that they would like to happen, so they propose that to us. The same thing would happen to anyone in the public, if you see something in the zoning ordinance you would like to talk about, you are more than welcome to come in and talk to us. When that happens, generally, it's not city staff pushing through any certain language, it comes from a discussion, and we push it forward just to have the conversation, we're not necessarily endorsing it, so, the earlier change that happened from, the setback change, that came from the, came from our Development Committee. The engineer and I meet with the Development Committee as needed, it's usually every month, but sometimes, you know, things happen during the summer, no one's around, so, but, they come up with some ideas, we offer them up to planning and zoning, see what they think, get their feedback, and if they think it's, yeah, we'll like to talk about it in a more formal setting, get some public feedback, then we put it forward as an ordinance, so, that's not necessarily endorsed by city staff, it's just part of our process. And one note about covenants, those are things that we do not enforce as city staff, those are something that, in the covenant, it would generally say who enforces it, but the city does not enforce covenants.
Thanks, guys. All right, who else would like to discuss this?
Thank you, Greg Lacy, 108 West Granite, right behind Lot 29, right there. Thank you, Brian, for addressing a lot of my concerns about it being single-family. Obviously, I got my back up a little bit when you see something's going to be zoned R2, and there's the potential for multifamily housing, which, obviously, when I built my house, everything up there is zoned R1, everything around it's R1, I just didn't ever anticipate there would be any change, which, I recognize change. And, I, again, Brian, I appreciate the clarification, that does do a lot to set my mind at ease. Obviously, it's right out in my backyard, I can see, the cul-de-sac is graded, it's high, it's set up for walkouts, I get it, you know, you can see what's, what's happening. There's no utilities or anything like that yet, but, obviously, that's, that's the road they're going down, so, thank you for your time, I appreciate you listening and hearing me and the other people in my neighborhood respectfully. As a firefighter, I do have an issue with the five-foot setbacks, and I know that that has been addressed, and you just need to remember, in Brandon, Brandon's volunteer organization, Sioux Falls has five-foot setbacks, but we are, we're professional-paid volunteers, and we are there a lot faster than the fire department here in Brandon. And that's not a knock on Brandon, I was chief here 15 years ago. Volunteer firefighters are limited on what they can get done, how soon they can get there, and what they can accomplish. So, I would speak against narrowing setbacks for that reason, I think that's a ship that may have already sailed, but I do want that concern noted. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the Council?
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Sarah Travis, I live at 101 West Stone Street, so I am further south, but you pass my house on the way up here. And today, what I'm talking about is a broad look at the safety of this. I recognize that there are other issues with the zoning and the covenants and the placement, however, the more people we have in this subdivision, and growth will happen, I understand that, we have, for all practical purposes, one access point to this subdivision. There's a blind spot on it, and then people use Sioux Boulevard, which is how they're going to access these lots, as a jetway, as a runway. Police have tried to slow it down, it might happen while their little electric light is out, but that's it, it goes right back to it, and it's not just teenagers, there's adults, it's been going on since I lived there, or since I moved there in 2014, so it's not something that's going to stop. And I'm concerned that the more leeway we give, the more opportunity there's going to be for more multifamily, and it's a slippery slope, and if we do this now, what's to say in the future it won't happen? And, talking about our children and the safety of everybody walking, namely across that street, to the park, there's a, there's a big safety factor there for me. Thank you.
Others that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Wendy Lacy, 108 West Granite, Lot 52, so 20, Lot 29 and, I think just 29, 28 are behind our property. I just first want to say I'm not opposed- 28 are behind our property. I just first want to say I'm not opposed to 20 through 25 going R2. Me personally, I'm not opposed to villas. I would love to see the developer take another look at not rezoning lots 26 through 29 to R2, and just to leave those as R1. That is our, I mean, it's directly behind our house. I know their intentions aren't to put in multifamily housing, and I know that there's covenants, but things can change, especially with market, if those lots aren't able to be sold. I'm concerned that it could come back to R2. That's my main concern, is I don't want multifamily housing. And I know that's not the intentions, I understand that. And Brian did a great job tonight explaining everything and put me more at ease, but again, that's my opposition, is lots 29 through 26 going R2. I am just curious, I'd like to ask each of you if you are for this rezoning. I just want to know why. I feel like we've all said as neighbors why we don't want it rezoned, but I'm not clear on, you know, your intentions, why you want it rezoned. I'm wondering if you're willing to tell me tonight?
We will be having discussion after public, everyone has talked. So you'll probably get that information at that time.
Okay. Everyone will express why they're voting the way they are?
If they choose to.
So I can't ask for you to?
No. No?
Okay.
I don't know all these rules, Wendy, sorry.
Gotcha. Okay.
And we have a pretty chatty group, so I'm guessing that you'll hear the answer.
Well, I guess just in the past meeting, there wasn't really any why you're opposed or unopposed to this. And I just really feel like as neighbors, this is our neighborhood. And if you lived in that neighborhood, would you be concerned of the possibility of R2 going there? Maybe you wouldn't, but I am. It's my property, and this is the, this is the only venue that I get to state. And I hope, as representatives of our ward, of our community, that you would take some consideration into what our neighborhood is feeling. I know not everybody was able to attend tonight. There was quite a few people that weren't able to attend. I know some people wrote letters and whatnot, I don't know if those will be read, but it is my concern, and, and it is affecting my property, and that's what I have to say. I'm not opposed to villas, absolutely not.
The letters are in our packets, excuse me, the letters, we've seen all the letters, they're in our packet, yeah.
Or they normally read, or?
No.
Okay. Just one other observation, I am concerned, I have heard some talk between my neighbors, and this isn't from me, that maybe perhaps some phone calls were made to city officials or emails that weren't returned. That concerns me a little bit, but that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Anyone else?
Barb, do you want to clarify that they're read, everything in the packets are read by the council members, but we don't read them out loud during the public input?
Yeah. Read the emails that we give, yeah.
Anyone else?
Anyone else? So now we move to discussion? Do we have to have a motion first and then discussion, or just discussion? According to Roberts' rules? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of ordinance 682. So would anyone like to share some comments?
So one question regarding what she said, if lots don't sell for five years, does the city have any control over keeping it as a single-family resident? I mean, I know that there's ordinances and things, you know, but do we have any control over it, or can there be an apartment building built if it sits long enough?
Well, you can always get things rezoned. You have a whole nother public hearing and publication. The covenants would be out there, and that would be, to Patrick's point, something that the property owners could enforce against the property owners, the developer, whoever owns the lot. So if you have a covenant and it says, "Single-family home," you go down to court and file an action to keep a single-family home. That's what a covenant does.
Well, and R2 is multifamily, but it is not apartments. So it would have to be rezoned to R3, correct, for something like that to happen? Yeah.
I know. R2 is, you can put a duplex? Okay. And I'm, I'm referring to fourplexes, okay? Okay. I just wanted to make that clarification. I, it's still multifamily. Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd just make a comment, you know, I was, last reading, I was opposed to this, just because I didn't like 20, lots 28 and 29. And again, just having Brian up here being able to talk, made me feel a little more at ease for most of these people that are, that are sitting here. Again, they're covenants, so there's, again, there's nothing that the city can do, but we also know that Van Bussker, just like us residents, has been, been in this town for a long, long time, developing and are part of our community. And we appreciate them, just like we appreciate everybody that is a resident here. So I guess because of that, I'm gonna trust what Van Bussker is doing, and I'm gonna switch my vote to allow it to, allow it to happen.
And from my perspective, you know, I, I had a conversation with Brian earlier today. I worked with the city staff on getting clarification, you know, again, being the new guy, more information is always better, right? And I've, I've talked to several folks that live up there. Sarah, I think I've emailed back and forth with you a couple of times. You know, I've got the same concerns with, with 28 and 29 budding existing homes up there. But what really concerns me is, I took a call from, from one of the residents there on Granite, Granite Circle, who had some issues with water, water runoff, which I think, once the infrastructure is built out there and that's all completed, I don't think that that's gonna be an issue. It's kind of the median between now and then though, right, that, that kind of concerns me. And then this afternoon, actually, I had a conversation with the retiring fire marshal in Sioux Falls about the five-foot setbacks, and his response was probably not a positive one as far as five-foot setbacks go, even from a, from the Sioux Falls Fire Department perspective. But he does not support five-foot setbacks on homes. You know, if there's 10 feet between structures, if there's a fire on one, the other one's gonna feel the heat as well. So it's for those reasons that, and realistically, this rezone to R2, to me, does feel almost like a little bit of an end-around, where the, the ordinance was changed at one point in time to say, in R1, you have to have seven-foot setbacks, but in R2, if you rezonate to R2, the same single-family home can now have a five-foot setback. That, to me, i- if it's one or it's the other, the rule should be the same, regardless. You know, if we're okay with five-foot setbacks for R2, why aren't we okay with five-foot setbacks for R1? So for that, for those reasons there, I'm, I'm not supportive of this. And, and I don't think there's any blame or fault with Van Bussker. They are a good partner to the city, they really are, but I don't know that I can support this.
I'm just gonna say, I did vote for the initial time through here, and listening to Brian talking about the covenants, the covenants was, was a bonus piece for this. I went up there and I walked around, and I looked at it, I could see the drop-off for the walkouts. I had some concern about the, the traffic load as it was related to Sioux Boulevard, but as I further looked at this, I think a good number of people that leave are gonna be funneling down Emerald to Redwood, and then, and then out that way. So I had a little more comfort with, with the traffic flow. And again, on traffic, one of the things to remember is that not everybody gets up at the same time, all the garage doors go open at the same time, and everybody leaves at the same time. That happened in a couple of movies that I've seen, but in, in reality, that's just not how it happens. I would anticipate that a lot of these villas that are being built up there, it looks like a good number of them. Usually, when you've got people that are, are looking at villas, you're talking about people that are possibly retired or close to retirement, they don't have kids in the house, probably not the same number of people load in those apartments. I, I'm just guessing Brian would probably, he shakes his head in agreement to that. So again, the inclusion of the covenants, I think, is a very positive thing, and does give, I would hope it gives people a lot more peace with this. Thank you.
So I guess I've been involved either with planning and zoning or city council for the last 15 years, and I have always viewed my job as to protect the investment of the shareholders of the city. Whether that be you own a single-family home, whether you bought land, whether you own a business, whether you have a commercial property, whether you rent property. And so that is my philosophy when it comes to rezones, when it comes to basically anything. Now, I also know, after research, after research, after research, that even if it was a fourplex, it would not negatively affect the value of your home. There's no truth to that. It's, it's a good emotional ploy, but it is not factually true. So I've always been in favor of this. I will continue to be in favor of this, probably because I've been involved long enough to know that it doesn't scare me, I guess. And, yeah, yeah, that's it. All right.
Well, my, my position has been, I tend to follow what P&amp;Z recommends. I do attend all the P&amp;Z meetings if I'm in town. So I know what a difficult job that they have, and, and they're very well-versed. We have a builder, we have an architect, we have business people, and some of them have served like Tim for a very, very long time. So I do tend to follow what they recommend. I've had several comments about, well, you represent our ward. I represent the ward in the capacity of being voted in, so that we don't have a gerrymandering situation in town. So we have wards for voting, but I represent the whole city. And so I can't just look at, you know, I have the Bluffs, and I have you guys, and some other ones. I just can't look at that particular piece. I have to step back and look at everything. And so I just wanted to make that clear, that I, I don't have anything against Stone Ridge by any means, but I'm looking at it from a whole city perspective. So whether you agree or not agree, that's my position. All right, so do we have more discussion? Yep. So I think we'll do a roll call and vote. Christina?
Fish? Johnson? Jorgensen? Cole? Lawrence? Steen?
Motion carries. Thank you all for your participation. That's the way government should be. And we appreciate your coming and spending time with us. We're gonna move on to standing committee reports, the golf course. Golf course.
Addition of one seasonal person, Will Peterson.
I'm moved to approve.
A motion second to hire Will Peterson for the golf course. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Andrew, you got another person to help you out? Okay. We have the Parks report. I'm trying to see what we have to take action on here, Brian.
Safety Town teacher.
Safety Town? Okay. So when Vicki David was on council, she started the Safety Town, which is a cool little program for five- and six-year-olds, teaching them about safety, and what a police officer does, and EMT, and our fire department. And it's been very successful, and we're planning on running it again. So this motion would approve having Vicki run it. She's run it the last couple of years, and then Officer Sarda works with her on that. And I don't know how many kids they can take.
I think they limit it to, is it 30 this year?
30? But 30 little kids learning about this stuff, I think, is really valuable. So would there be a motion to hire Vicki to do that again?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we've had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? We also have a request to sell concessions at the pool. Christina, do you want to give us a little history on that?
I can. We used to sell concessions at the pool. We had this little nook in our poolhouse down there until 2016. After kind of looking at analysis, revenue expenditures, labor, we were not making anything on it. Actually, we were losing money on it. In order to make anything on it, obviously, the concessions prices would have to jump substantially, so we decided to move to vending machines. Vending machines work okay, but with water and bills, it doesn't really mix. Kids were jamming machines on purpose, and just staff getting a lot of questions and comments on the vending machines that we didn't own. So we did choose, and the park board did choose to move those vending machines last year, and since then, we have not had concessions at the pool. Instead, we allow families to bring in food and drinks in, and that went fairly well last year. We do have Tina Feenstra, who has shown interest in selling concessions at the pool. The concession stand would be located outside of the pool fencing. There is some concern on that, especially this year with all the construction traffic down there, and right across the street is the water treatment plant construction. If you've been down there, there's dump trucks in and out of there a lot. And then if kids go out of the pool, for the cashiers to keep track of who's been in, who's been out, if the pool get at capacity, and if they would go out of the poolhouse, they would not get back in until kids have left, and there's room back in. So I guess for those concerns, our staff's recommendation, we would continue to deny the request this year, just because of all of the situations down there.
And would it be something that we could reevaluate next year if we would choose to not do it this year? I mean?
We can always reevaluate it.
Are we getting feedback from families or pool users, kids that they show up by themselves, that they want more concessions or want some concessions, or are they pre-satisfied to just bring their stuff in?
I haven't had any feedback on concessions down there. I honestly think, I think a lot of families like bringing in their own. I mean, the concessions we had were candy, junk food. I don't think a lot of parents, I think a lot of parents are okay not spending $20 and the kids buying junk food.
They were the, what was the top seller, those donuts?
Honey buns.
Honey buns? One of the, our park board members is a mom with a kid that goes to the pool all the time. She, she likes being able to bring in her own stuff, so.
I think just for the safety concerns this year, it's just, there's a lot of trap construction and big trucks going down there a lot this year.
So can you tell me the difference? So we've, we've approved a vendor license into Aspen Park during softball and baseball games, correct?
Correct.
So what's the difference between a vendor's license and providing sort of concessions at the pool? Like, could they just apply for a vendor's license and set up anywhere in the park they wanted to? Not necessarily to be a designated pool concessions?
No, any vendor that's selling product in a park has to have city council authorization to do so.
Yeah, I think she'd actually technically have to apply for a vending license, and we'd have to make sure she has her sales tax license. we'd have to make sure she has her sales tax license as well with the vending license application.
That's all your question.
Yeah.
Nope, no, so, and the vending license we have right now for concessions within Aspen Park would be to sell it over in the concession area, so that we designate that over there.
Does our vending license designate where in the park it must be sold, or just that it is in the park?
No, it doesn't designate any specific locations in the park, but typically, those are approved for baseball, softball tournaments, so specific dates. Not just a blanket authorization for every day.
Hi there, I'm Tina Feenstra, I made the request. In the response to are people looking for concessions there, you know, after the park board meeting where I was somewhat approved until this meeting, you know, I visited with several people, and they were elated. I mean, some, that there would be concessions at the pool. I think it is something that the community does wish is there. I've heard many people wish for that, that request. I did go through the work of getting a sales tax license and apply for the peddler's license, which is $100, and that is, you know, when you're selling candy at a pool, that is a commitment. So I am committed to the project. I'm happy to answer other questions. I've been to the pool several times to look at where is the best place to set up, what makes the best sense for, you know, making sure that the safety concern is taken care of there, too. There's some good shade under the trees, where many of the daycares wait, and kids put their bikes, I mean, there's a large area there. So there, you know, children are certainly there, we're not going to be in a place where there are, where there is traffic coming in and out. I can understand the pool going in and out, but I don't, you know, these are the first couple of days of summer with pool capacity, I don't know that we hit pool capacity every day. I guess when I've been there, that hasn't, your first few days of summer, of course, are going to be very busy, but I don't know that that's something that happens on a daily basis. But, any other questions you have for me, or?
Yeah, so Tina, what would be the optimal, the best place for you to set up?
Right now, what I was looking at was the, there's those large trees there, that's got the best shade. I mean, that's really because I prefer to sit in the shade in the hot sun, but I'm open to wherever else you think is a better place. I've also looked at underneath the awning, on the, you know, the cement there, that shade changes with the time of the day. I mean, I've looked at that. So you don't necessarily want the food in the sun, if I don't have to. If I'm required to have a tent there to sit under, if that is required, I'm open to that as well.
So this isn't like a food truck or anything like that?
No.
It's just, you're kind of setting up shop?
Yep, it's prepackaged, yep, candy and snacks. I do not have drinks currently, but that's something, you know, we may add in the future if sales are good. But...
And what's your timeframe? Are you, you want to try to be there just about every day?
Yeah, in the afternoons, at least three days a week. Again, we'll look to see, you know, how is it going, how successful is it? But, three days a week for sure, in the afternoon for open swim is kind of our goal for right now, so.
And park board approved, is that correct?
They did. Which, so I guess I wasn't expecting the non-approval here. We've gone through many, many things to get ready for it, hoping to start on Wednesday, but...
I did not vote for it on park board, the rest did. And my reasoning was, I'm concerned, and I really appreciate your doing this, because that's how I learned to make change, working with my dad at a concession stand. So, I have fond memories of that. But, my concern is that once we do one, you know, we're setting a precedent, and we always have to be cautious with those, and not that this is a bad precedent, but, you know, how many, and what do you say to somebody else? You can't say no then, I don't think.
Well, we already have said yes in Aspen Park. I mean, that's one of the things I'm struggling with a little bit, is we've already said yes to somebody selling concessions in a different part of the park, to somebody dragging a trailer into the park and selling out of it. I don't know, and I understand the concerns that the city staff has about kids coming in and out of the pool, and being rescanned, and that being kind of a mess. That is something that you would have to understand is a thing. If kids come out of the pool, they're not necessarily guaranteed to get back in. And so they have to understand that. I know that that will create issues with the pool staff when kids come and say, well, I just wanted to go get a snack. I get, I do, I'm struggling a little bit with this, because we've already said yes in other places in the park, but I also understand the concerns that the staff has, and I think that the pool staff would be put under more than just making sure kids aren't drowning, than having to worry about whether they're coming and going. So, I don't know really how to think about this one just yet.
Is there any option for me to be within the gates, or is that open a new can of worms? Okay.
I just know, yeah, speaking, I guess, on Tim, like, down at the baseball field, just about every single night, and it's, they're not selling just on tournament weekends, they'll be down there tonight selling ice cream cones, a food truck. So it's, for me, that's why I'm having trouble, why would we deny her this opportunity when we're allowing others to do the exact same, exact same thing? We go down to the pool all the time, and we bring our snacks, and yes, it's nice as a parent to be able to have healthy snacks for our kids, but also at the same time, there's also times where I get off work at 5:00, and my kids and my family want to go to family swim right away, and we're not able to bring, bring food. And so, kids are kids, they want something there. So to have an option there, and again, being a steward of what we're doing in Brandon, like, if there's an opportunity for us to, more sales tax revenue to the city, you know, we're spending a lot of money for this pool, here's another way that we could possibly make some money off of, I know it's not a lot, I know it's not, but it's something, something is better than nothing, in my opinion, so.
I guess my concern would be the safety, you know, maybe year by year, this could change, but I think this year would be a horrible year with all the traffic, the trucks. In the ballfield, it's a different situation, the concession stands are within the ballfield, you're not out by the busiest road in the whole parking area. I have grandkids, and I'd be scared to let my grandkids come and go, you know, without being supervised. I mean, that's the part that scares me. I've got a five-year-old grandson that might go out for concessions and head down the road, you know what I mean? You drop your kids off at the pool to be in the pool, but if they're coming and going for concessions, and trucks and things around, I mean, it scares me a little more for that reason. Maybe next year, I'd be for it, for the fact that we don't have construction going out, that'll be a few years, but that scares me.
So also where I struggle is, we don't tell kids that they have to be accompanied by an adult when they come to the pool, right? Like, I see kids riding their bikes down to Aspen Park all the time. So, we don't stop them from entering the pool if they're not accompanied by an adult when they come to the pool. So, there are a lot of things that, you know, we as government officials have control of, and some that we do not, like, but I, I'm still struggling a little bit with this.
And Tina, is there, so is there any spot that could work on the west side of the, where you go into the pool at? Maybe one of those tents, something like that?
Sure.
So that kids, when they come out the door, are going the opposite direction of the construction? I haven't been down there in a while, so...
Sure, going the other, the other way, sure.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're open to that, if location is what it takes for approval, we're fine with that.
Right, because I, I'll be honest, I've been down there with my son playing tennis, and I would have loved to have something, where I could get something to drink, or, you know, some sugar to keep me going, you know, type of thing. I think, I think it could be a destination for kids just riding bike down Aspen to say, hey, let's stop in and grab a Snickers bar or something, you know, not even necessarily at the pool, but just, I mean, kids are down there playing ball, they're playing catch on the fields anyway. I think it's another option for them. I understand the concerns about pool staff, because they are busy doing other stuff, but, you know, to the point about your five-year-old grandson, he could believe anytime he wants to, anyway.
You have to be, you have to be seven or older, or accompanied by an adult, just reminding people of that.
Yeah, I think if there's a location, like, again, if you look to the, if you do the north, the north side, where basically the entrance is, there is a lot of grass area there. We were just out there last night, had a bouncy house up there, and we were far away from any traffic for the, for the construction. I think there to the west somewhere, now there's not much shade over there, or to the north, but even a little bit to the, to the west, there are some trees that may be, maybe some shade area, but I, that's what I would consider a little bit more would maybe be, yeah, if we're going on the east side where all the traffic is, that's, it does get, I understand, that gets a little, but, boy, we got a lot of space out there, I think this would be a great opportunity for you.
So I just have another quick question. So, anybody who obtains a sales tax license and a Brandon peddler's license theoretically could sell in the city of Brandon, correct?
Correct.
They cannot necessarily sell in one of our city parks unless they have permission from us.
Correct.
But they could be on a city street, selling out of a food truck at the entrance of the park. Is that right?
Correct.
Right.
Subject to police suppression.
I don't think they can sit on a street.
What's that?
Yeah, it's legal.
Yeah, I mean, subject to police...
It can be on city property, or a call, or local app, or on Sunday, so they have a couple of cops before otherwise.
So if they're legally parked on a city street, they can operate a food truck?
No, not on a street.
No.
It's got to be a parking lot, private property.
It's...
Yeah, so you can't be, a food truck can't be on a street, you can't be impeding traffic, safety issues.
So it can't be anywhere, because the street would also be a city property, right? Just like a park is a city property?
It's over by the city, but it's a little bit different classification. It's a park.
In general, though, I mean, they're both city property.
Okay, so, let's have a motion, one way or the other. I'm sorry to put you through this, Tina.
I'd make a motion to approve Tina this year. And again, preface, she'd have to come back again next year, you know, again, if things didn't go good, or if it went stellar, either way, she'd have to come back next year, is that correct?
And before I second that, Lisa, if we did approve this, and a month from now see that there are issues, could we revoke said license?
I don't want to get into the legal analysis of that, I would just say that there's some potential issues with revoking it. And if you're wanting to designate a certain area within the park, more specifically, you certainly can. So, you just said grant the ability to, so I just didn't know if you wanted to make that more clear.
Right, I'd amend that to, ideally, the south side or west side of the, in pertaining to the, to the pool, basically the poolhouse there. North side, north side, west side, yes, thank you.
And I would second that.
Okay.
I do feel somebody brought up that if we, if we approve this, and we're opening up the door to more approvals, but we've already kind of opened that door earlier this year, so, that was just my only point.
Anyone else want to make a point? All right, let's do a roll call on this one.
Fish?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Lawrence?
Aye.
Steen?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Go get them, yeah, go get them.
We also hope to mentor to some of those kids that are there every day, too, I'm a teacher, so, and I will work closely with the pool staff to, you know, I'm happy to visit with them, if there are issues that they're concerned about, please let them know, they're free to come and visit with me. I mean, we want to enhance the pool, not be a hindrance, so.
You might get more than you're asking for.
Yeah, well, teachers can deal with a lot, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, 20, 24 miles for Mutt's, is that something we have to approve, or?
Yeah, that's for next year. She runs it every spring.
Okay.
So it's a private event in the public park.
Hey?
Second.
Hey? This is Miles for Mutt's, Jamie. Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve that for May 5th of next year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, Jamie's good for another year. Okay, then we've got the police report, we have some interns coming.
Correct, council needs to approve the interns, so that they can be covered by workers count.
Can I do a one motion?
Yep.
I would approve the interns.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay. Got some helpers, chief.
Thank you.
Got the inspection report, and then we've got a request from Bethany Meadows for their fireworks display.
For Thursday, July 6th, depending on whether the fire department will be, they'll coordinate with the fire department.
This has been done for many years.
Yeah, it's been done every year.
Yeah, many years.
It is open to everyone, right? I think, I mean...
I think so, yeah, you know, as long as they have park, if they have room for parking.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Yeah, we've got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, fireworks. Aspen Ridge Concept Plan. Are we just looking at this?
It's for information, but the developers are here.
Right.
Russell, hey, excuse me, Russell Atkins, 8304, South Timber Oak Circle, Sioux Falls. Ladies and gentlemen of city council, good evening. My name is Russell Atkins, I'm CEO and President of Christensen Development Partners. We are a locally owned and owned operated real estate developer firm here in town. We believe in, excuse me, in reaching the lives and communities through smart and responsible development practices. I've got another business partner with me here tonight, Amy Folsom, Eric Christensen, and Jason Bortnum, we're not able to be here tonight, but they will be at future meetings. It's my pleasure to introduce you to our concept plan for 93 acres called Aspen Ridge. The 93 acres, we are purchasing from Rockford and Galishewers. We are in the process of annexing and rezoning into multiple zones for multiple uses, all in line with your major comp plan. It is located south of the golf course, with extending the existing streets of Golf Country Club Avenue and Chestnut Boulevard. It will contain two general business lots, that we've received some significant interest in, both from a convenience store location and a daycare. It does have 6.7 acres of multifamily there, that we've received significant interest in as well, and we're in the middle of a purchase agreement on that. There's just over 10 acres, I believe, for townhomes, also significant interest in. Those would be R2 zone on the townhome. We've got Lutterman Tent for 56 patio homes, at the southeast corner, the map's turned a little wonky there, so, the top right corner of the 56 units, and that, those will also be R2 because of the size of the lots. It's more low maintenance, slab-on-grade patio homes. We've got 11 lots for 22 twin homes, also R2, which leaves us 69 single-family lots, also on the site. One of the things we're really happy about, 14 acres for a city park, that we're going to be proposing like a splash park, and probably some pickleball courts for that. We're working with staff, and so forth. Like I said, we're real excited about bringing in this community. And with that, I would open up with any questions, or, I've got DGR here, too, so if you get above my head real quick, we can get the engineers up here.
So is this your first venture in Brandon, or have you done some development here before?
In Brandon will be the first, yes.
Great.
Well, so, let me just say, I appreciate you guys doing this, I mean, this is going to be a huge project. One thing I'm looking at is along the railroad track there, is there going to be any type of noise mitigating? there gonna be any type of noise mitigation or anything like that? Because I think Eastern Analysis is gonna start using that track again. Is that right?
They've talked to us for six, seven, eight years now that they intend to open that track back up at some point in time with approximately two trains a day, about 26 to 28 cars. That's what they've informed us. They have not started work on rehabbing the tracks east of McCarty Road. So we don't have a timeframe. They just received a grant, I believe, to do it, but we haven't heard anything of their plans.
No, I listened to a lot of the same conversation that you had with planning and zoning, and I think, I think it looks like a great project. Obviously, one of the bigger concerns we've got is the lift station functionality for this development over here.
Correct.
Able to manage all of that. That's one of the bigger things you need to manage.
We talk to Tammy on a regular basis with that, and luckily, DGR is also our engineering firm that's helping us with the project. I'd also like to say we're scheduled to have a town hall meeting for the rezone application June 14th as well at the Golf Club, Country Club. 7:00 to 8:30. 14th, next week.
Any other questions?
So Tammy, question for you. This is the concept plan that we're being presented. When would the preliminary plan come before us?
So we talked a little bit about schedules today in our meeting. Hopefully, that they are going to submit that later this week. Review would be a quick turnaround if we want to get on the next P and Z agenda, because the preliminary plans are the ones that need formal approval, where this concept plan is just for informational purposes.
Now, with the, with the potential rezone, do the folks across the road, would that, they be affected and they would get letters of notice? Okay.
I believe there's 10 properties that are north of Aspen that would receive mailed notice from us for the rezone. The City Council approved the annexation, contingent upon closing a couple months ago, and then we're working on a rezone application, July, first meeting in July for P and Z, if I remember right.
First, yeah, and then, I forget the dates, there's so many dates.
26th.
But, but when it's annexed, so it's annexed in first, and then we determine the zones, or how does it come in?
The rezone, it's continued upon the closing.
Okay.
That was at request of the sellers with us.
Okay, so it'll come in zoned the way they would like it, and then we would have to approve that?
When, when, the way it's set up now is we will go through the rezoning process with the public hearing in front of the City, or Planning and Zoning Commission, and two readings in front of the City Council. That ordinance would then be effective upon closing of the property so that when they purchase it and close on it, the zoning would be effective, or we would publish it, it would be 20 days later, but that's the process.
So if we have someone that's across the road that's opposed to commercial, they would need to come in and talk before the rezone at the public hearing?
They would come in at the public hearing.
And we also are gonna be mailing them to let them know about the town hall, and we'll have more than one.
My only comment would be going back to the sewerability. We've made them aware that with their private lift station, they can cover, what, about half of this development?
That's, no, it's being designed to where it will cover the whole development.
We have the ability of that?
So yes and no.
Yes and no. Okay.
They're gonna put in there on lift station. That lift station would pump into our golf course lift station.
Okay.
Right now, we do have some capacity in that golf course lift station without having to upsize anything, but we also are putting in that east side main for Chestnut Ridge and the new school. So we can only develop so much on that east side without having to do some upgrades to the golf course lift station, and so we have DGR kind of looking at that to see what those trigger points are, and to see how much we can develop before we need to do upgrades to our golf course lift station.
What do you think the timeframe is realistically for all of that to get developed?
Well, our current plan is file, or Zone 1, Phase 1, this year. With the interest level that we got, Phase 2 also this year, which would be the eastern half of that, with a few of the single-family lots available, they're just, everybody just seems to want to live in Brandon. And so it's a great spot, actually, and the energy here will be great. So I'm anticipating about a five-year build-out, but a big chunk of it here in the first two, in the first year.
So when we, when we look at that sewerability, if there's two developments that are using that same facility, is there enough there to handle both of those plus the school?
Sounds like they're about getting over my head, Jake. These are conversations that we've been having a lot.
Yeah.
So Jake's probably got some data.
My also, my other comment would be then if it was enough for these two developments, but we would not have enough to do anymore.
Yeah, and I don't think we have quite enough to do both of the developments fully. We would have to do some upgrades to that lift station.
Yep, I'm Jake Morris with DGR Engineering. So like Tammy said, that's kind of an ongoing analysis right now. What we do know is the golf course lift station cannot handle this entire build-out nor the entire build-out of, of anything to the east. I'm trying to keep it from getting too technical here with flow rates and such, but the golf course lift station operates currently at 40% capacity. However, this, as a standalone, would be its entire capacity, so we're kind of looking at force main capacities downstream. You're limited by the force main coming out of the golf course lift station. That's about 700 gallons a minute. At the, and this at its peak is about 270, so it's just kind of a balancing act with timing of peaks, and we're in the process of developing a memo for the city of that analysis, and that'll be information that we'll gladly share with the council as well when it's all put together.
I guess my, my comment or concern is that they do want to build a school on the east side of town, and we have two developments that have been proposed that will basically maximize our sewage capacity. And everybody knows that when you build an elementary school, the growth that typically surrounds an elementary school is explosive. And we simply, without spending, the proposal was something like $17 million, we don't really even have enough to do the two that are proposed, so.
17 million is for the McCarty lift station.
Okay.
We can upgrade both the Bethany lift and the golf course lift, which is currently under analysis, to see what we need to do to those two lift stations to serve this growth as well as the school in Aspen, or Chestnut Ridge.
But even those, when those are all built out, even with those improvements, we couldn't handle anymore.
We don't know that until we do an analysis on the drain and on the basin.
That's correct. Yeah, the McCarty lift station's much more long-term planned than what, what this is in itself. The golf course lift station, what we know now is, you know, the wet well, the, the infrastructure that's there is adequate. It'd just be a matter of upsizing pumps to increase that flow rate to, to make the, you know, five-year, 10-year projections work, so, yeah.
Any other questions for the gentleman?
Not for the gentleman, but more for Tammy, I suppose. But so Aspen is a state road, right? How does, how does that impact this development at all? Is there anything special needs to be done?
So Aspen Boulevard is a county road. Yep, and so they are doing a traffic study, and hopefully we get that traffic study later this week for review, but we will also share that with the county. And so they actually have jurisdictional authority over it, so they'll say yes or no to the access locations. Once it's annexed in to the city, then the county does expect us to take it over. I'm sure we'll have a lot more discussions about that, too, coming out, because Aspen Boulevard is not in the best of shape, and I'm sure there's gonna be some improvements that need to happen to that as well, so.
Thing else? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. We don't need to do anything with this. It was just for information.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a request for extension of the sales tax rebate from Henkel.
Hi, my name is Bruce Lear. I'm at 2201 East Byram Circle here in Brandon. I'm the Director of Operations at the Henkel Corporation, located at 600 East Willow Street in Brandon. And it was a while back, the council did approve a tax repayment program in support of our $30 million expansion, and that was specifically on equipment. The timeframe for that was a window from July 1st, 2021, to June 30th of 2023, and we've, the project is still moving forward, full steam ahead, but we've run into some delays, not a lot of surprises with that. The winter weather wasn't kind to us, even though everyone's pretty much forgotten about that by now. We've also run into equipment delays and contractor delays as well. So we're just asking to extend that time window out by 18 months to cover all of the equipment cost timelines, or the equipment purchase timelines that are expected due to the delays with the project. Any questions for that, for me?
It's going well?
It is going reasonably well, with the exception of those delays, yes.
When do you expect it to be done?
We are expecting it to be done a year from now, about July 2024, and I've just put the 18-month request in there to cover, you know, any other further unexpected delays.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve this request, maybe with a year-long instead of 18-month timeline?
That would be great. I would appreciate that.
Because we, we already have approved this request, so I would make that motion.
I'd second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to extend for one year. Any more discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you for coming, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your investment in Brandon.
I'm gonna make sure that they're aware that it is equipment only.
Yeah, that it's equipment only.
Yep, same, same agree.
So it's kind of same.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, moving on to, moving on to the township request, page 92.
Scott Tripp, I'm Supervisor of Brandon Township. We come every year and ask for you guys' help for some dust control, but before you even think about it, I'd like to just explain it to, how it's explained to me at the state level when we went to the state convention. The dust control really isn't a, it controls the dust. It's just a calcium chloride that, if you think of gravel road being rocks and gravel and all the way down to fine dust, the dust that flows away, when you see a dusty road, is the actual binder that holds the road together. I mean, so that's, it's more of a road binder than a dust control. Dust control is a, is a added plus to it, and people, that's why they usually get it residentially or personally, which, I do it in my house, my neighbors, we pay and have it done every year. I live out in the country, too. But I don't get the traffic that that road gets on Redwood, if everybody's familiar where Redwood's at. Reason I'm bringing all this up is because I get a lot of calls saying, hey, how come the township doesn't keep the road up? One application of dust control will honestly last two to three months. We had traffic studies done on that road, and we mentioned it at the state convention this, this winter, and it's 500 to 600 cars a day, and the guy looked at me and just started laughing. He said, there's no gravel road that, that can withstand that kind of traffic, because we put the dust control slash road binder down, once it starts to break up a little bit, which we don't have a water truck to regenerate it, you roll the road. Every time you roll the road, you're obliterating the product you put down. So I know you guys got a lot on your plate, and a lot came up in my mind as, as everybody else here was talking about all the additions in Brandon. There's a lot of stuff going on. I, I get that. We try to be a good neighbor, but we are poor. I mean, a couple years ago, we had, the city's been great helping us out. We had that road washed out, and we had to put $25,000 worth of gravel and, and equipment time on it, and we have a $60,000 year budget for that. So eight tenths of a mile took up over a third of our budget for the year for gravel and, and maintenance. I get all that. All I want you guys to do in the back of your minds is, I know you're always trying to think ahead, someone come up with an idea, you know. Mr. Cole asked me a couple times to pave it. Well, I've had other people in the township ask to pave their road, and, you know, it costs a million dollars a mile for a really crappy paved road, and on $180,000 year budget, we can wait five years with no snow removal. I mean, I'm just a basic sales guy. It just doesn't pan out. And if we do, we have 40 miles of road to take care of. Who gets the mile? And honestly, with the traffic that's going down there, we're trying to, and we're at a catch-22 because we're right in the middle of the town, and that's the only part of the, of our townships in the middle of it, and the police, you know, they can't do anything. Even on our traffic studies, you wouldn't believe the speed that cars go down that road, even as bumpy as it is. There was one, it was, school was still in, over 100 miles an hour every day down that road. Scares me to death. I just want you to look ahead in the future. We all know that everything went as a colossal failure with the annexation on that. I get it. We need to try again. I've talked to a lot of those people on there, and I told them they can't have their cake and eat it, too. They don't live in the country. 20 years, I've been in this town since 1979. That was kind of the country. Redwood was gravel all the way through town, but times are changing, and they don't live in town anymore, so, or they don't live in the country anymore. So, you know, that, they always used to tell me, hey, you need to fight for us against this annexation. You'll lose our tax revenue. Well, if you look at your township versus state and county, we, we would have lost, with all those beautiful homes in there, $8,600 a year in revenue, and we're spending $15,000 to $20,000 a year maintaining it. We're trying to be good stewards. I, I work with Tammy really close and, and Brian, as far as, like when the water tower was coming up in there, trying to keep that road, and they said they'd help take care of it, and I don't think we invoiced them once for anything, because we kind of just put it under our wing and said, hey, it's a short-term deal, we'll, we'll go with it. I want people to start thinking down the road, because we just can't do it forever. I mean, and it's not a big enough road for us. I mean, I got people at the rest of township saying, hey, eight tenths of a mile, 40 miles. So I gotta weigh it out. I mean, we'll, we'll hang in there as long as we can, but when people start calling me, and I just want you to know that we're trying everything we can do. I mean, we're running Mike down there as, as many times as we can, especially if it rains, but three, four hours after he's gone, I mean, after school gets out or workload, you know, we've all known that there's only two main arteries to the east end of Brandon, and now we're talking these, all these new homes, a new school, the bus barn's right down that road. I'm trying to think ahead going, how are we gonna manage this? But that's your guys' deal. I appreciate that. Just want someone to come up with some kind of idea, because we can't financially or emotionally, you would not believe how many calls I take on this. I was looking, anyway, long strike. But, so if you could just, I mean, the, the dust control will help for a couple months. We talked about maybe saying, do you want to do it twice a year? Do you want to, but the thing is, it's just an absolute Band-Aid. I mean, it is an absolute Band-Aid, and the more we turn the road, all that dust you see is all those fines leaving and going in the ditch and blowing away. If you look at a road, now we're starting to get just down to rocks. Well, you can roll rocks back and forth all day long, and you're never gonna get a road bound together, so that's kind of where we get. Then that road needs to be scraped off and rebuilt, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, and once again, we just don't have the revenue. We appreciate all the help and the way you guys are working with us, but just listening to, if Aspen has to be redone, there's only one other way across, across the river, around the golf courses, and that's down that terrible road. So I just want someone to, other smarter than me, to come up with a plan. But we would take your help with the dust control if you want it. Questions?
I'm just kind of curious, have you reached out to the state at all as far as any grant money?
We did. They said no, and I had Colbeck look, and he, we talked to Jack Lee, we've, I mean, there's just... We've, I mean, there's just nothing. On the township level, they don't, unless you've got some ideas, there's just nothing out there. Even when we had the flooding, we had to wait almost a year for FEMA money for all our roads that flooded out, and it almost broke us. I mean, we're just a tiny little bug, you know? So I don't have any answers. I, I stay awake at night thinking about it. My deal is safety. When there's a school out there, it just, I'm just cringing about kids and buses and, because they're going to use it. The school flat out told us, we don't care if it's paved. But you will. I mean, I mean, it's just reality.
And. So you have talked to the school?
I'm not with the school, and that's the other thing. They want to put a turning lane and pave part of our road, and then just leave it our road, and we're like, we're not interested. I mean, then it's still, I don't know, legal-wise, we're just a bunch of, I mean, township supervisor, gravel on the road, gravel off the road, snow on the road, snow off the road, few culverts. Ta-da. It's not trying to stay in the legal boundaries of what we're supposed to be worried about.
First of all, where were you like a year and a half ago?
I've always been there.
Second of all, we're also very small, right? We can barely take care of the stuff we have.
Absolutely, and I get that.
Yeah. So I guess a question for Tammy. Do we have a traffic count on Maple? And do we participate at all with the maintenance of Maple? Or is it Maple, whatever that is?
We don't give Split Rock Township anything on Maple, and there are traffic counts out there.
Yeah. Do we know the number? If he said there's 500 or 600 on Redwood, do we have 500 or 600 on Maple as well?
Well, they were just doing one. Split Rock Township asked the county to take that road over, and they don't want to either, and that's a $10 million road that, eight years ago to pave. So now it's probably more like 20 million.
For Maple?
For Maple.
Okay.
And with that being said, I know the supervisors on Split Rock, and that's a whole different deal. They probably have more money than we all have. They had $2 million in CDs. They put dust control and binder on every single one of their township roads all year long. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. We just can't do that. And I, and I know, all I'm saying is, we'd love for some help, to try to help, but I want you all to know, we are trying. I just want to know if there's ever going to be an end to it. You know, I know it's our road. I mentioned a couple of years ago that I'd sell it to you for a dollar. You just got to take it over. But.
We did try.
I know, and I know, and with all due respect to everything, there's no easy way for anything. You know, I looked at the annexation paperwork, and honestly, part of the way it was written was, here's what we're doing for this area, for these people, those 12 families or whatever. Not the, all the new ones coming in, and, and I know you can't just keep taxing and doing things to people to cover this, but 12 people can't do it either. But I don't know what else, I don't have any ideas. I'm just a dumb salesman. But I'm just thankful for anything you guys can help us with. I just want you to know that we're trying, and we just can't do it forever. I'm fighting with people in our township calling going, hey, you guys spend more time fixing that road than, and I got a washout. And so we got to go, you know? We've been really fiscally responsible in the last five, six years. When we took over our own township, bought a road grader, hired a person, actually built a building, bought a road grader. We used to sub it out, and we were at $185 an hour, and we were on the call list for snow removal, the call list for gravel. We got that down to $90 an hour, $95 an hour with a grader, with a part-time guy. So that's where our budget has been, coming back to the, the black. Otherwise, we were completely broke every year. I don't know if you could do any Dave Ramsey work, but when FEMA, when that, those storms hit in 19, we, we were sucking wind, wondering if we were even going to be able to fix the roads we had. So you can do whatever you want. I appreciate it. I appreciate the questions. If you ever have questions for me, call me. I mean, all the phone calls, I love them. I'm up to like, I don't know, 93 cents an hour for the year, and I'm getting pretty, pretty cocky with that now. But any ideas, we will work with you, but there's just, we just don't know what else to do anymore. The people on that road, I would love to sit down with them again and just say, how are we going to do this? Because no matter what, someday, they're going to have to be in the city. I mean, it's just the way it is. Or they, I hate to say it, if you don't like it, you might have to move. But I don't know what else to do. So whatever you guys can do for us, we appreciate it. If you want to do some dust control, if you're binding, whatever you want to call it, if you want to try it a couple of times this year, the problem is, with the way we do our budget, we don't want to just throw money to the wind. I mean, even if it's your money. I'm just being honest. So thank you very much, and anybody else, anything for me before I leave? Thanks for what you're doing, because just in my little territory, I know how thankless it is. Because you're danged if you do, danged if you don't. So thanks for putting in the time and doing what you do.
Okay, what would we like to do?
I also struggle with this one quite a bit because in no uncertain terms, we were told that people were not interested in us at all. So it's hard for me, and it, it's only, I get it, they're asking for $3,500. Am I right? 7,000?
7,000, 12 feet.
Is that to do all of it or half of it?
Do the whole road. It's 25 feet wide, 28.5 tenths of a mile from the asphalt on Chestnut all the way to the bridge of the golf course.
But I think in the past, we've done half, haven't we?
No, you did, I think you did.
We did the whole amount?
I mean, even three years ago, the whole bill was, the first year we did was 3,000. That was the whole, the whole bill. My whole bill used to be 400. Now I pay 1100 because of my spot, so everything's gone up.
Yeah, we know them.
500 or somewhere in there. So I have to look it up. As they roll the road, they bring the water truck out.
How many years have we been doing this?
Five or six.
Five or six.
I think this is, the whole issue with these roads are going to be driven once again by, we've heard about the additional development that's going out there, the school going out there. And I said it at the time, that development is going, going to eventually drive the annexation issue. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and approve this at $7,000. A lot of it is used by our citizens or heading to the interstate. Out of fairness, it's not the, the 12 people that live on that, on that street. So it's, it's also kind of a safety issue if the road continues to break down. Go for one application, and that's my motion.
Any discussion?
The comment I have is, I know other people who live on gravel roads, and gravel roads are all used by a lot of people. Again, we're opening the door to other people saying, why don't you do our gravel road? McCarty Road is a good example. My daughter lives out there, and, and my grandson gets called in for going too fast raising dust. I mean, I, I know the, the reason people don't want to live on gravel roads. I see it every day out there. But yeah, I realize that this road's going to hit a lot more traffic than others, but I'm afraid that we set the standard for a lot more people wanting us around Brandon to help them on gravel roads.
And again, the difference between McCarty Road and, and Chestnut and Redwood, or yeah, Chestwood and Redwood, is that on McCarty Road, it's the people that live on McCarty Road that are traveling in and out. On these two roads, it's a lot of Brandon residents that are leaving their houses, taking the shortcut to the interstate and, and moving in, and that, that does separate the difference. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see us prove it for McCarty Road. I wouldn't want to see us prove it for Maple. But this does make sense to me. And I don't think it sets a precedence based on that.
Fish? Johnson? Jorgensen? Cole? Lawrence? Steen?
Anything you can do to help us out there? Want to give us the lay down, lay low down on this? Gary is here. He can get through a meeting in a half an hour. What the hell?
He knew what he was doing.
Well, the, the Ironwood extension between Sioux Boulevard and Aspen Park has been discussed for a few years. We've talked about it, CIP process. In 2021, we had a cost estimate, and then that cost estimate was revised in 2023. It went from 1.8 million to 2.6. Last year, in 2022, when we were discussing it, we looked at three options on how to do the special assessments on the roadway. Since it's a new street, the policy in the past is the city would special assess those affected or those benefit property owners for the improvements. So the three options, really the only difference was, we used, we used linear foot, front footage for basically the utilities and then an area assessment for the street. The only difference between the three options is how much of Aspen Park we would include in the area-wide assessment formula. So option one was the smallest portion of Aspen Park is about the south, south thousand feet. Option two was the south 1,500 feet, and then the third option was to include all of Aspen Park in the area assessment formula. The cost estimates or the estimated assessments are showing on page 94. With the, you know, like I said, the estimated cost went from 1.8 to 2.6. Each of those properties that are listed there are adjacent to or would benefit from the improvement. All I did to determine the, or estimate the 2023 cost assessments was to take a percentage. So the same percentage for the city, the 374 divided by the total cost, applied that to the 2023 estimate. We didn't take a look at it in depth, look as to individual property owners in the assessment policy. It's just a quick analysis of what the revised cost estimate would be or the impact of it. So if you look at that, if we stick with option three, and I'll just use the city's share, you know, we would go from 624 to 886 on the assessment. Or what would be our share of the assessments. And then there's non-eligible costs. For instance, there's going to be a turning lane. We wouldn't assess the turning lane. We're looking at a 10-foot sidewalk on one side. We wouldn't assess five feet of that new, of that 10-foot sidewalk because it's oversized. We pay for oversizing, et cetera. So we didn't look into those nitty-gritty details. I just looked at large-scale costs.
Well, I don't think that we're in a position to do the whole thing because we set a precedent. Because, I mean, typically the landowners around do share in the cost, but these costs are pretty darn hefty. And I can't, in my mind, think that they're getting that much of a benefit. So this kind, this pushes this project to a lower priority for me. I suppose it'll just get worse, but, than some of our other projects.
Yeah, and with any special assessment, the city can only assess the affected properties by what the increase in value would be to the parcel. And I'm not sure if there's any good way to predetermine what that value would be. So other than the memo and the cost estimates, then we laid out the assessment process on pages 98 and 99. So it's a fairly lengthy process, requiring notices, certain resolutions, meetings with the property owners, review their concerns, and then the whole bidding process, and then final determination of assessments. So.
I would also say all subject to appeal. I mean, they, the property owners, whatever you decide can appeal to this court.
It's kind of like annexation, in my mind. Painful.
Annexation, yes. Annexation's easier because you know upfront. The whole special assessment process, you may not know until the improvements end, a lawsuit's filed, and some of those assessments could be set aside if they don't increase the value of the property. So it's, you don't know till years down the road.
Have, have we heard anything about the potential for any sort of development feeding off of this road besides the stuff that's already sitting there?
We have, we have not talked to the prop, the new property owner to the south. There may be some ongoing conversations among current property owners about the roadway. We are not privy to those, but it's my understanding there's still some ongoing discussions.
Seems like when they came in before, all the existing property owners were saying they have no intention of ever developing. No, it's always subject to change, but that was, that's my recollection of all their comments from previously.
I was referring to the land that would be maybe made accessible by this, this roadway? The, the stuff that's sort of to the, what, south?
Yeah, there's property in the south that's undeveloped. There's also property on the north side that's undeveloped as well.
Yes.
So that, it's my understanding there's some ongoing conversation between a couple of those property owners.
So, so this is for information purposes, so when we decide on our CIP, this would come up again?
Correct. We wanted to give you this information before we put the CIP in front of you, which will be at the next meeting. Just if you want to include Ironwood in the CIP plan for '24, '25, we would need to get started on the process fairly quickly.
Well, I know that that's a hot button for the mayor. Bruce, you were interested in it too, were you not? No? Okay. Park Board would like it, but I don't know that I, I could go along.
If we had some direction, I could finalize the CIP next time, basically.
Well, we can, we can do the CIP plan. We can, we can leave it out, and if the council wants to put it in, you certainly can. I'm just saying that if we want to do the extension anytime in the next two years, we need to, we need to get rolling with the process.
I, I don't think we, we just don't have the money for it right now.
No.
There's just nothing we can do, yeah.
I guess I would, I would agree with that as well.
Well, I've had numerous conversations with, specifically with baseball families who are very in favor of it. But they're not the ones who would be ending up paying for it. There would be definite benefit to the Baseball Association and, and other groups that use the pool down, or the pool and the baseball fields down there. I don't see the homeowners there really getting a benefit other than additional traffic in front of their homes.
Moving on to Rushmore Phase Two, permanent utility easement. This sounds fascinating. I'd love your job, Tammy.
As part of our reconstruction project this year, we added some water main looping into the project. So it comes right off of that cul-de-sac and then connects into Aspen Boulevard. And so we did do the work already. We did the work under a temporary construction easement, but this permanent easement just gives us the right later down the road if we have to maintain it or do anything with that pipe.
We need a mo. Yeah, since it's done, okay. And we need a motion. Okay. Motion, a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Core area Phase Two B design.
Um, sidewalks. So, you know, we are in kind of that third phase, or Phase Two B is what we're calling it for the core area. And we are adding sidewalks through the neighborhood, but there's still no sidewalks on the north side of Aspen Boulevard. So we do have sidewalks on the south side, but in we, that's a wider sidewalk, so we consider that our shared use path. I would recommend that we add in sidewalks along Aspen as we go forward with our core area project. area project. Um, there is already sidewalks on that side from Main Street to Lewis, but it doesn't connect all the way to Sioux either. And, um, there's been quite a few concerns about children coming from that development and then crossing Aspen Boulevard mid-block and at other crossings or intersections that aren't exactly safe for them to be crossing. So by putting in the sidewalks, we'll be able to kind of, um, direct kids in the right direction for going to the pool and Aspen Park and that sort of thing.
So what do we need on this?
Some direction from the council, whether or not you want to include, and, and all we're looking at is sidewalk from Main to Third.
Right now, yep.
In this project.
Park Board would certainly be in favor of that.
So now just a third, but then moving forward, we continue on, on Aspen, and that north side would be, sidewalked all the way to?
All the way to Split Rock.
Yep.
Yep.
I'd move to approve.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, pose, okay. Moving on, Holly Boulevard zero-scaping.
So last fall, we planted some trees and some native grasses and some other plantings along Holly Boulevard. Um, we had two different landscape companies come in and, uh, put in kind of their best guess of what would work in there, because just grass and anything else seems to die really fast in those boulevards. Um, one thing is that they need to be maintained and we need a little bit of weed control. Parks Department did a really good job with trying to water those trees and keep them alive, there's two that need to be replaced. Um, and then there's mulch and whatnot in there that needs to be kind of redone and cleaned up. And so the, there's two, uh, cost estimates in here. One is from Impact Landscape, and that is kind of their worst-case scenario. Um, they did add, like, reseeding those areas, which Parks Department already did reseed those. Uh, realized that there are a lot of weeds there and they'll have to be sprayed eventually, but we need to wait five to six weeks after they reseeded in order to spray them. So, I think it's gonna take us a couple cycles of reseeding and spraying to actually get it to grow and look good. Um, the other one was from Oak Ridge, and they gave us kind of a price per site visit, and that was a hundred and sixty-five dollars. So they would come in and they would just weed it. Um, Oak Ridge wouldn't be doing the watering, they're not gonna reseed it and that sort of thing.
So you're making a recommendation?
Yes, that we hire Oak Ridge and Impact to take care of those boulevards for the year.
Just to get them going?
Yep.
Yeah, I, do you remember, it's kind of an experiment on our part, to look for alternative landscaping methods for boulevards, that, you know, we all know that growing grass in the boulevards is somewhat difficult between snowpack and, and salt, et cetera. So if we can figure out something that, A, is a little, a little healthier or can withstand those, those stressors, as well as something that doesn't require as much water. And that's why, you know, it's, it's kind of imperative that we get these things going so that we, we've got an example of what can be done.
Are we, are we going to take advantage of our gigantic piles of wood?
Not the best chips for that.
Great for bedding for animals? Not so.
Okay, would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, again, we're skipping discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Water and sewer, how are, how are we running water-wise? Raleigh just snuck out before I asked him.
It's one, weekend's been one-four, one-three, one-four, so the weekend was good, with the rain on Friday, I think it helped, a little bit of rain Saturday, Sunday.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're back down.
Do you think we should send out something? Textedly, something to keep people from going crazy?
You know, last year when it was a one-six, I think we started sending out messages when it was one-four, one-five, I can't remember exactly. So since we bumped it up to one-eight, we'd probably send out messages when it gets to one-six, one-seven.
I mean, I can send out reminders to remind people that we're on the odd even, I think there's still some not complying, um, obviously, but, uh, so I can send out as a reminder.
Well, and if they do the odd even, they can keep their grass green. I think they think that they still can. So I think we just need to emphasize that, yeah.
Infrequent watering is best.
Right. So all of those little tips. Do we have anything underwater and sewer then? No new business, we don't need executive session?
Nope.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
And tell Harry he can never miss another meeting. Man, and that could have been a lot worse. If the room, if the room had been packed, it would have been worse. Man. They quieted down pretty well.